It's five o'clock on Monday, January seventeenth. I would like to welcome everyone to our city council meeting today. Call this meeting to order. And if everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Deb.
Rodney. Tyler.
Here.
Here.
Jody.
Here.
Harley.
Here.
Brad.
Here.
Thank you, we do have a quorum today. Entertained a motion then to approve today's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. We have several items across the mayor's desk today. First, I'd like to thank Kylie Scow, our videographer. And today, as we recognize Martin Luther King Day, we know that he had very lofty dreams and visions for mankind, as well as American. We continue to strive to reach those today. But I just want to say that I'm proud to be part of a vibrant community that has dreams and visions. And it's exciting to see the plans unfolding as we work through budget and planning at this time of the year. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank Kurt Nielsen and his team, the street department for all of their work moving all the sixty-some miles of the snow off of the streets and the alleys. And all the snow that they hauled away over the weekend, so that we could all get back to work safely today. And I did stop today, and I visited with Ryan Zimmerman at Klosinies. And he told me that the company is, they hope to be back about a hundred percent in spring. And it told me that all the employees were back to work after their fire about ten days ago. So, proud of their resilience and appreciate them being part of our industrial footprint here in Algonah. And then, the children's musical that was held over the weekend, titled Jack and Bella. And I want to thank Gina Givin and the many volunteers, actors, and sponsors who were involved in that community theater. This was their first show put on by the All Call Theater. And despite having to cancel on Friday, they had a successful production on Saturday and Sunday. So, certainly well done for all those who participated and happy they were able to do that. So, does the council have anything they'd like to share?
Other than to point out our videographer was a great, she had a very challenging part in this program, and she did a great job.
Okay. All right. Okay, and then we'll move to Agenda Item Number Six, update from the city administrator.
Just kind of one quick item regarding snow removal. So we get something like ten inches and no travel is not advised. So I always appreciate that, just from people's safety standpoint, and they adhere to that, as well as from an operational standpoint, trying to get things cleared out. When we declare a snow emergency, and this is our second one of this winter, let's notice and put on our Facebook, our city website, as well as if you sign up for Alert Iowa, you can opt in to get a text when a snow emergency is in effect. So people have a variety of ways to sign up, it's also announced on KLGA. The, in the downtown, there are some signs that finally went up early last week. We had ordered them quite some time ago, but with backlog of sign orders, with Ida Prison just being shut down, got delayed a little bit. But we've got new public parking signs up in the downtown parking lots, which are the top one there on the screen, that are based on our Wayfinding Master Plan. And then, the snow emergency parking on Side A, Side B. This is the first winter that we've got this new system in place that heading on the first day or the second day of the snowstorm, there's direction on which side to park in in the downtown parking lots. And that's helped to keep vehicles on one side, so our crews can get in there and they can remove the snow. It's much quicker, more efficient, without having to stop and go around vehicles. It can clean the parking lot better, and it allows them to move quicker, which, to get to the other streets and other parts of town. So, I'm asking people to keep tabs on that when there's a snow emergency. If you're somewhere that parks in the downtown parking lots, you pay attention to that. Side A, Side B is only in effect from seven AM to seven PM, so it doesn't affect your stay.
Seven PM, seven.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Now, do they normally start on Side A, so when it snows, can a person assume to park on B?
Well, we usually have them park on Side A.
On Park A, okay. Just so they have a system.
I mean, we've only done it once so far.
Yeah. Well, then this is a hundred percent, whatever they did. There's a pretty good response to it, I think, too.
I think there was a few challenges.
Sure.
But this time, no one got taken hit or towed, they got warned. So, they had their one snowfall grace period if they didn't move their vehicle, and the next time, they'll have some more issues.
I don't know if I can jump in here quick. There were sixteen which would have been violations.
Oh, okay.
For the first actual time, isn't too bad. But the violations, we put the warning signs up, gave them the warning, also put on there the ordinance, and said, "Next time, at this point, we will start enforcing." So we tried to do everything on our end, and the city's doing everything on their side just to give everyone enough warning, so this is a good transition.
Yeah, good, thank you.
And this is a snow emergency flyer that just kind of breaks down the Side A, Side B, when the snow ordinance is in effect. And then some of the additional details in English and Spanish that we'll be putting out with our snow emergencies when we declare them, it's just an information sheet and so on there. It has, you know, on the first event of a snowstorm, that we have an ordinance or emergency in effect. We'll always state it, but it will be parked on Side A that first night, and then rotate to Side B.
The other thing people need to remember is sidewalk. You need to have your sidewalk cleaned off within two days?
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours, one whole day, okay. Have your sidewalk cleaned off, so people can use it. I saw today there was a few out there that hadn't been touched. And I think some of that comes down to maybe some unoccupied properties and possibly some new tenants who are unaware that they're required to do that.
Dever will be out tomorrow tagging doors. They get a door tag, if they're not cleaned in twenty-four hours. Then he gets ahold of Dan, and he takes some door down and clean that in the air.
Okay, anything else, Jacob?
Thank you.
Move to Agenda Item Number Seven, then this is the citizens' opportunity to address the council with any items that are not on today's agenda. And I don't see anyone here in the council chambers. Is there anyone on the phone?
There's one on the phone, but I don't see her attempting to.
Okay. We'll move then to the consent agenda, and that includes approving the minutes from our January third work session and our regular session, approving the minutes from the joint session that we had with the county supervisors, and that was on January the eleventh. Approve the bills to be paid this cycle. Approve a Class C liquor license to AK's Chrome Kitchen. Approve a Class E liquor license to Casey's General Store. Approve a class, approve a special Class C liquor license to Algonah Axe House. Approve the department reports, as well as the minutes from the various boards and commissions that have met, and approve Jacob's administrator's report.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Don. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Motion carried, thank you. Move then to new business, Agenda Item Number Nine. This is a resolution concerning the joint city-county precincts.
So this resolution does two things. First, it rescinds the previous agreement that we have with the county, and then approves adoption of the next. When the 2020 census was done, the Keith Industrial Park was not in city limits. And so, now that it is, with the district doing, we have to have a special agreement pointing that out, which is over there. The state reviewed it and made ones and changes. So from the city, where our proposed awards are unchanged, what this agreement does is just stipulate instead that on the county side, that property would be part of their precinct thirteen. So, it's kind of a minor change on the county side, but the city, ours is unchanged. But since it was approved, they proved, we're just updating that agreement.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Don, a second from Tyler, any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number Ten, this is the third reading of an ordinance establishing the new voting district ward.
So this relates to the previous item, but the proposed new wards for the city. We have four wards where council members elected from, and then two at large. So these will be in effect if adopted until the next census in 2020.
Move to waive the reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Brad to waive this third reading, any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Motion carried.
Move to approve the third reading.
Second.
Motion from Harley, a second from Brad to approve the third reading, any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley. Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Brad to adopt the third reading of the new voting district wards. Any discussion?
Actually, we're adopting the ordinance, not just the third reading.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, adopting the ordinance, yeah.
The entire ordinance.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Vote, please, Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number Eleven, this is an ordinance concerning the setbacks for light manufacturing and heavy manufacturing zoning districts.
This ordinance change, we discussed it briefly last fall, and it was for the planning and zoning, tends to the side yard setbacks for light manufacturing and heavy manufacturing. Right now, those are both zero feet side yard setbacks to the adjacent properties that same zoning classification, just to provide for light air and space for operations around those and, you know, the types of uses that go with having light manufacturing. We're proposing that the minimum side yard setback be set to ten feet for both districts. The front yard, minimum lot width, and the rear yard heights, none of that has changed. The only thing is the minimum ten feet. And then both still retain that if it's adjacent to a residential, it's twenty, minimum twenty-five feet for light manufacturing and fifty feet for heavy manufacturing. The item was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission back in October, and they recommended approval of the setbacks to both districts.
With that summary, I guess we can waive the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the first reading, any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Motion carried.
Move to approve the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Don to approve the first reading. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad. Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda Item Number Twelve, this is a resolution approving an engagement agreement with our bond council.
The city in the past has utilized Hollis and Cooney as our bond council. So, later on in the agenda, we have setting a public hearing. So, the bond that we will be issuing is the planning design loan for the wastewater sewer plant. So that would be through the state revolving loan fund. So this proves an engagement agreement with Hollis and Cooney to basically make sure we go through all the steps and the proper notifications and processes to issue debt.
So hypothetically speaking, about the wastewater treatment facility, what happens to a city if they don't, if they don't make the effort to fit the standards set forth?
You'll, if you hold out, eventually they'll get sued by the DNR, the EPA, and be forced to, under a consent decree, to comply.
I'm just curious.
I'm sure there are fines and things like that, that they would assess in the meantime to
encourage.
Encourage us to follow the law.
Yeah, it's one of those items that the, so it's actual, the permit, the authority to regulate is, comes from the federal government, and then it's designated to the state to administer. And, you know, there's been a number of communities that are in similar situations as us, if not worse. They know they've got a lot coming up in terms of expenses. And, you know, you can try to, you know, work with them to get delays or accommodations and things like that. But at the end of the day, you know, if you don't comply, they'll basically, yeah, they have the authority and can make you do it, and will, yeah, basically fine you into compliance as well as once they get in there. And if it gets to that level, it's going to become much more dictatorial in terms of what has to be done and what those standards are, and then follow to make sure that you continue to meet theirs. So it's much better to respect the authority and comply, I guess.
I suppose ultimately, their authority probably comes because we dump into the river, and that's regulated by the Army Corps, I assume.
Well, and even small towns have lubeons. They started this, all this new regulations with small towns, when their lubeon system, they had to be updated. There were small towns that their sewer rates went from twenty dollars a month to seventy, ninety dollars a month for residential, because they had to get their levels, their testing levels within a certain range of the DNR listing. It's like you started with the small guy, and you're working your way up the steps to bigger communities as they go.
So, you know, multiple times a week, there's a number of tests that the department has to take, and they get sent down to the state lab and verify that we're meeting all our regulations on various different outputs that were under the, what we're permitted legally to put into the, into the system.
And even our large manufacturers have to do that, too, take test, send in to the DNR to verify that they're within their purring results also.
Which actually helps us out, if they're not dumping things that they shouldn't be.
Right. And we have treatment agreements that will snap on in a while, and there's one more that we're working on a new treatment agreement for.
Entertain a motion then to approve this agreement.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Don, a second from Jody, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Brad. Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, this is a resolution setting the date for a public hearing.
Prior to issuance of the death of the planning design loan, we need to hold a public hearing on the proposed issuance. So this resolution proposes that we set a public hearing on an amount not to exceed one point, one, two million dollars on Friday, or excuse me, on February seventh at five PM.
Okay.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Don, a second from Brad, about setting the public hearing then for February the seventh at five PM, is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number Fourteen, this is a resolution pertaining to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency.
This is related to one of the departments with the state revolving loan fund. Those, part of those monies were seed monies from the EPA, and that plan was set up with that. There's some federal terms that come with that. Basically, there's certain standards that you have to meet when you're acquiring property or displacing persons using federal money. So, for example, if we have to acquire property, we have to go and get appraisal and inform the owner of the fair market value. There's a number of steps that are required to make sure that you meet. Fortunately, with our project, we're not going to have any land acquisitions or any displacements, so it won't affect our product at all. But it is an assurance that gets incorporated into the contract. So, since it's a technically a contract item, we are going to approve it by resolution that in the event we were having to displace required property, we'll follow federal standards.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Was that Don that approved? Oh, Brad. Brad, sorry, okay. So Brad and Jody, okay, all right. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don. Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, this is a resolution adopting equal opportunity policy pertaining to the Community Development Block Grant.
This item and the next several items are all resolutions that we're required to adopt for the Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, grant that the city received. So as you recall, earlier this year, we received a grant of up to $249,999 to go towards the rehabilitation and repair of what's projected to be six owner-occupied homes in Algonah, the previously accepted pre-applications for that. With those federal monies, there's a number of policies that you have to adopt or restate just as a formality, so there's a clear record of it. One of them, this one is the equal opportunity policy. Algonah is an equal opportunity employer. This just restates it for the purposes of being able to include it in the grant filings.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, this is a resolution adopting a code of conduct policy.
This policy applies to the administration of the CDVG grant, block grant specifically, and just puts forth the standards for if there's potential conflict of interest of how those are insured, that's avoided. So, you know, as an example, as a city official, I cannot have a direct family member of the recipient of this grant. So it's just stating those conflict of interest things that must be avoided.
Sounds a lot like Big Brother stating the obvious.
Well, I have a question on that, though. Being a real estate agent, having worked with past clients, what's, if I throw it, throw this information out to all past clients, and three of them get it, I don't know how, I don't know how this is administered, but, you know, I mean, like, I had the information right away and threw it out to my clients, and they had, is there any, any worry with that, that I took advantage of knowing information at the time?
It was all, by the time you would have got the information, it was all public information as well. I mean, it wouldn't be in a situation, I mean, crazy hypothetical of quote-type of thing. No, that, yeah, not an issue.
And you weren't involved in deciding who received the grant, you just gave the information out, so you're fine.
Okay.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Don, a second from Tyler, any other discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried to adopt the code of conduct policy. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, this is a resolution approving an affirmative fair housing policy.
This resolution states that the city will implement the program in accordance with the federal fair housing standards, and that we will affirm fair housing policy. So there's a variety of different options cities can take to do this, to meet this for the grant requirement. There are things like posting the federal fair housing law in City Hall, or including information in it, in a mailer, or in a newspaper publication. So, just affirms that we'll follow the law in terms of implementing our own program, and then help promote awareness of the program as well.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Brad, a second from Jody, any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Yes. Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad. Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number Eighteen is a resolution adopting the procurement policy.
So for the project when it actually goes to bid, this is the procurement policy that will be followed, which is all, in accordance with federal procurement standards. So, basically just states on how the projects will be bid, how conflicts of interest will be handled, that it is for the best cost of responsible contractors who would be in charge, that it is competitive. And this would be for like when, you know, scopes of work will be developed for the homes of, you know, what improvements can be made, and then those packages put together and bid out. These, all these items will be handled by our grants administrator, and I have with that area council of governments.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt that policy?
Second.
Please, Don.
We have a motion from Tyler, a second from Don, any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number Nineteen is a resolution adopting city council meeting rules of procedure.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, one more.
Oh, wait, this nineteen? Okay, that one I don't have on mine, sorry. I went from eight to the twenty on mine, but.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, 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 it's on nineteen on the version that was posted.
So this goes through just a couple of different things. One is a residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan. So this lays out that in the event that, in some town being repaired, that they have to be relocated. The process for doing that, what the requirements are, the city, there's funds within that grant, within that grant award that if someone needs to be displaced, there's funds set aside that can be used for that. So that'd be things like if lead paint has to be evaded, so they need to, you know, be out of the house for a certain amount of time. But except funds to cover that are, they're part of that grant award. It has an excessive force policy that basically just states that the city does not use excessive force and that if anyone would like to make a complaint about excessive force, they can use it at City Hall. It also certifies that we will be in compliance with the procurement standards for CDVG, the version of which we just adopted. And then also approves the mayor to designate alternate signatories if, in the event that he's not available and a related document to the program needs to be signed. I should just note this at the beginning, but all of these are boilerplate that all cities that receive this money have to adopt. So there's really no negotiation on, between the federal money and how it's gathered in cities, pretty much every city at some point has adopted these.
They've just had to go through them one, one at a time.
That's the way they require it to be done.
Yep.
Moved to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Don, a second from Jody. Any discussion? Hearing that vote, please, Deb?
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad? Yes.
Motion carried. Now we'll move to agenda item number 20, which is a resolution adopting city council meeting rules of procedure.
This adopts updated rules for city council meetings. The item considered attached to the resolution for approval is the latest version of the council rules, which was updated here on January 17th. The only added note from our last time that we met is just clarifying on vote formats and council members that now they're allowed to vote by proxy, but if you are, I mean, technically, you can still vote. So these will replace the rules that were last adopted by the council in 2006.
In reviewing those and these, I think we needed to do some updating. Didn't even have our meeting time starting right, so. And I like what you've done with the new rules. I think they work quite well, so I'm moved to approve.
I'll sign it.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Tyler. Any discussion? Hearing that vote, please, Deb?
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody? Yes.
Harley?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 21 approves the pay application.
This proves a pay application number six from Ready and Graveling Excavating for the Moore Street Snap-on Drive and Keek Industrial Park project. The amount to this pay application is $130,921.07. This is where work completed in December of '21. The project will remain open through the winter and then we'll, if there's any final work to be completed, that will be done in the spring and at that point, we'll accept the project and pay out the retainage, which just right now stands at $119,559.
Have to wait till spring to see if the grass grows.
I'll move to approve the pay application.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Tyler, a second from Don to approve this pay application. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb?
Tyler?
Yes.
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad? Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 22 sets a public hearing.
There's proposed rezoning of two properties at 504 East McGregor and 508 East McGregor. The next item on the agenda is referring those to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The commission is scheduled to meet here before our next council meeting to consider the request, so we suggest that we set the public hearing on the proposed rezoning for February 7th at 5:00 PM.
About time they get rezoned to be what they've been doing. Any news tomorrow, I guess? Is there plans for those two properties to be updated? Is that what this is addressing?
Just 508. 504 is actually in compliance with zoning because it is duplex.
Yep.
But we're requesting 504 to be rezoned to multi-family, so we're not spot zoning. It's adjacent to Edlin's R and Two, Keek and Crest Street, so if we do 504 and 508, we won't be spot zoning. But yes, there are, there are plans for 508.
Is that Brandon Gifford? Is that Gifford or is it Jennings that are...
Gifford's the one that needs the rezoning.
Okay.
So he's in compliance with his own code. And yes, there are plans for updates.
Okay, good. Actually, really nice to see.
Is that a motion, Brad?
I'll make a motion to approve. We're set the public hearing.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Brad, a second from Don to set this public hearing for February the 7th at 5:00 PM. Any discussion? Hearing that vote, please, Deb?
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 23 concerns a referral to Planning and Zoning Commission.
As we just discussed, there's a request from 508 East McCoy and based on that request, the city is asking that 504 also be considered for rezoning. We've talked to the property owner of that as well and he, he's okay with that request, so this refers to the planning and zoning, so they can consider it before our next meeting.
504 and 508 East McGregor Street, okay? Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to refer this to Planning and Zoning Commission. Any discussion? Hearing that vote, please, Deb?
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
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 Motion carried. Agenda item number 24 concerns the vacation of the city's portion of 100th Avenue.
So we obviously already had a public hearing on this item, joined with the board of supervisors, but process step is, needs to be referred and then a recommendation given by the Planning and Zoning Commission before any formal action is taken by council.
Move to refer.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to refer this to Planning and Zoning. Any discussion? Hearing that vote, please, Deb?
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 25 is to consider an application for a tax abatement.
There's a new house built at 801 West Nebraska. They have requested the urban utilization tax exemption. Had a 10-year decline in scale, recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion from Don, a second from Brad to approve this application for a tax abatement. Any discussion? Hearing that vote, please, Deb?
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley? Yes.
Brad?
Motion carried. Thank you and thank you Schulz's for investing in Algonha and I'm sure you'll enjoy that new house. Agenda item number 26, this is the first notification of vacancy and future appointment to the Housing Commission. We have a vacancy due to the death of Craig Myers. Craig has served actually on the Housing Commission since 2004. His term does expire the 1st of January of next year, 2023. This is my appointment, so this is just the first notification. And then agenda item number 27, this is the first notification vacancy and future appointment of Planning and Zoning Commission. Chris Lucas has resigned and his term also expires the 1st of January of next year. This is a council appointment. No action tonight, but this is just the first notification for that. Agenda item number 28 also is the first notification of term expiring and future appointment to the Tree Board. Lyle Prentice's term on the Tree Board did expire the end of last year, December the 31st of 2021. And board members are appointed by the council and they serve a three-year term. So again, this is just the first notification of that vacancy there. And we'll move to agenda item number 29. These are mayoral appointments to city council committees and boards and commission liaisons. And on the page six there of the different committees, some discussion, Jacob, the ways and means, I think all parties there have agreed to stay in those committees. A little adjustment maybe in streets and sewers would be Rodney Davis and Tyler Gibney and Jody Alt. And insurance and pension then would be Brad Hoover and...
Me, Don.
Yeah, yeah, Don Johnson and Harley Colehouse, so.
Can't be yelled at?
So, and I think the public safety nominations, I'm assuming, are, are the same, too. We just wanted to make those, change with streets and sewer and insurance and pension. So, do we need a council vote on that as well, motion and, or... Are we good?
Yeah, I think we're good. You're, you're the one that does the appointments, so, yeah. That's good enough.
All right. And then the, the board and commission liaisons, we haven't really discussed those yet with council members, so we'll, we'll look into that further then and hopefully appoint those with those suggestions then at our next council meeting, which is actually next Monday night, 24th. So with that, that brings us to the end of today's agenda. It's 5:44 PM and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you very much. The meeting's adjourned. We will reconvene then to our work session in just a few minutes.